This a existing water line on the south side of College Street that they will be having to tap into. As far as the water line goes, um, they would either have to construct a public water line up to the proposed lots as shown on the exhibit and install a public water meter at the frontage of College Street, allowing for shared access to access that public water line up to the private lots. Or, um, install private meters at each individual lot of fronting. And so that's essentially how they would get water service within that water line, um, where the water line is located, excuse me. They would have to provide a shared access easement because it would be having to get access by multiple parties. Um, in order for, you know, uh, public works to assess, read, maintain those meters. Very similarly for the sanitary sewer, there is an existing eight inch sanitary sewer on the north side of College Street. This one is a little bit more straightforward, um, due to the elevation at the back of their lot, they are, uh, facing the creek. So they would have to install a private grinder pump to facilitate flow from those proposed lots up to the existing, uh, line on College Street. And with that, we've done it in the past, um, the property owner would have to provide us with a, um, agreement between future property owners, allowing for the maintenance and operation and access of that shared grinder pump. And that's essentially how they would receive service. Drainage is pretty straightforward, um, any onsite, uh, sewer or detention would be have to, would have to get designed Montgomery County standards, which is what the city defaults to. Paving and plating or paving, those are, they would have a private access drive, so that would just be to your standard residential, um, requirements, how they want to design that. And then plating, as far as that goes, as I previously said, the property is not platted today. So in order to paper all this up, we would recommend that they go through a, well, they would actually have to go through, um, the full plating process, preliminary plat and, uh, final plat, like we're going through with all of our other single family developments, because it's not platted and they're extending public utilities. And so all of that is outlined in the, uh, summary memo. It's kind of just the last, uh, little bit, as far as the fees associated with it. You have a thirteen thousand and five hundred dollar fee for escrow. That would include all of the required, um, reviews for us to begin our civil review and assist them with the plating. And then as well, water and wastewater impact fees because they're, uh, providing new lines to their, um, site. So all that's outlined in the, um, memo. Um, this report has been provided to the developer as well as city council, um, so kind of just bringing y'all in on what's going on with this. Any questions?
Did city council make a motion or anything, or they just heard what you just told us?
They did accept our findings, um, essentially that's not binding the city to any, uh, agreement. It's just allowing the developer to know the city understands what our next steps are, what y'all's next steps are as a developer. Now, if y'all want to move forward, y'all have to go through this process.
And who, is there a personal developer or is it a builder?
So we've had-
It's just the trust, it's not-
We've had most of our correspondence with the builder, um, Jordan McDonald, I believe is his name. Um, but he's working on behalf of K I H, um, Richie Rich.
Okay. So this is kind of like a beginning of a, a mini subdivision? Is, is that what they're trying to propose, or is it only big enough? Cause it says for future homes, right?
So he has, uh, the property owner has told us that he is desiring to build houses for his daughters on this bottom land. Believe he has three daughters currently, but with the potential of adding future homes for their families. And so effectively a mini subdivision, but based on plating rules, we would require either further subdivision or, um, depending upon how they are looking to subdivide.
So it's a family owned compound type of situation? It's not a, hey, here Joe and suit-
Exactly. There's, to our understanding, there's no intent to sell the property in the future to non-family people. Exactly, stays in the trust.
And then what is this, um, uh, grinder pump? Like is it, is personally maintained and built by the owner themselves?
Correct.
Does it affect anything with our-
No, so it's essentially a small list station that pumps water or, uh, sewer from the house to the, the main trunk line of the sewer system. And so they would install a mini grinder pump on private property, construct a manhole that ties into the existing, uh, sanitary sewer trunk line and then pump from the grinder pump to that.
Okay, from the grinder pump to us?
Grinder pump to manhole and then gravity the rest of the way to your Town Creek list station number two.
Okay, so, um, so who's, what ordinances starting, where do the ordinances start and stop for the city of Montgomery to maintain that? Say it doesn't work, say, I mean, they're gonna have a permit, somebody's gonna go up there. Somebody from the city is going to be monitoring it or?
No, so the private grinder pump would be all on the property owners to maintain, operate, et cetera. So they would have to hire their own contractor, own operator, generally speaking, own operator to maintain said grinder pump. The city would only be concerned with the connection point to the public manhole and then everything after that.
So the public manhole, is there a concern at, from them doing anything coming to that, like?
No.
Is there a-
So we would, uh, they would, as far, as far as the process goes, they would submit plans for the grinder pump and their proposed connection to the sanitary sewer system. We as W J would review, provide comments, go back and forth with them on that. Then once we issue approval, we'll begin construction and then our construction inspection team and the city's public works office would be coordinating on making sure the tie-in is good, all proposed coatings of that proposed manhole are good. And then once that's done, we're rocking and rolling.
So we have a personal construction person and our city-
Correct.
That will be talking together when it all connects.
Exactly.
So basically it's just somebody owns land, wants to build a house on there and they want our approval.
Yeah.
So we don't have any said, like, we can't say your house needs to be this big, we don't have to have any offsets, the size of the driveway or anything. It's all whatever they want to do on their property.
Depending on, as of the proposed lots shown currently, there is nothing, depending upon whether or not they want to move further south. Um, if you look at, again, page nineteen, I believe, it shows that historical landmark overlay. That existing landmark would have to be, um, modified or designed to adhere to all the city's current regulations regarding historical landmarks.
Okay, who's in charge of that historical landmark?
That, oh, we were looking forward actually ourselves, Chris wasn't aware of when this became a historical landmark?
Yeah, I didn't know about it either, so.
Right, so this is all based of our, um, G I S data and, you know, previous, uh, historical documents. But as far as council action designating this as an historical landmark, we're not extremely clear on.
Yeah, I, I was, I've lived here a little while and-
Haven't heard anything.
Yeah, I was like, hmm. Okay, so the city is aware, we're gonna, we're going to make sure that if it is historical and we are gonna preserve it.
In the event that they construct or propose anything within the historical landmark, yes.
Running water line and sanitary sewer through it though, that's acceptable?
Yes, so because it's not altering any of the public facing, uh, aspects, it's all on the ground. There's no concern from a historical preservation standpoint that we were keen on.
The proposed to the water line though, is that publicly a, here some, if there's a separate development nearby, are they able to access that up until in that?
With on the private, with on the private properties? Generally speaking, logistically, that wouldn't, I don't see how that would work, um.
If it, I'm ju, I'm more wonder, I wanna better understand the access to that easement and the, the lines.
Correct, so again, kind of just restating, there are two options for the public water line, for the water line, let me now say public, for the water line. They can either construct a public meter at the frontage. Everything after that meter would be private, so it'd be on the property owners to maintain, operate, et cetera. And, or option two, they construct a too much public line with individual meters at each house. If they go that route, then the city would have the authority to access said, uh, access easement, maintain, operate, make repairs on that water line and read the meters at each, each individual lot. Again, we've provided this report to the developer, they haven't said one way or another how they would want to go. Um, we gave this, um, we presented this at the November, uh, council meeting. So they've had this for almost a month at this point, we haven't heard anything. Um, assuming busy with the holidays, we expect to hear something probably before the end of the year. But again, we haven't heard one way or the other, which way they would prefer still.
So when they get, when they just make these decisions and they come and they go, okay, we're gonna put, we're gonna build this wood house and we're gonna build this metal house and we're gonna paint it purple and green and all that, whatever, that doesn't come to us? To the size they want, okay.
To, up to their, obviously the building code standards that the city maintains. But as far as historical and planning and zoning is oversight on it, unless they were building within the historical landmark, there wouldn't be anything that, there would be nothing else that comes to planning and zoning.
So you're just asking us to look at feasibility of something that is going to possibly happen soon?
Correct, making y'all aware of potential developers.
It's gonna happen.
He is, he does seem keen on building these houses for his daughters.
Okay.
Uh, timeline, we're not aware of that.
And just to clarify, if he decides to, does sell that as not his intention, but he wants to make it attract, that's gotta be approved and go through the whole process.
Correct, if he wants-
Even though it's private property.
Yes, if he wants to further subdivide.
We're approving the two houses right now.
We're not approving any houses, um, we're prov, approving or really just discussing the feasibility memo. There's nothing for planning and zoning.
He's talking about he's, he's doing two single homes, that's his plan?
Yes, that is his plan at this current line, which would have to go through the building permitting process again, which doesn't, if it's not within the historical zone, uh, or downtown district or, yeah, historical downtown district, excuse me, it wouldn't come back to P N Z.
It's nice of him to ask.
We do appreciate developers that do that.
Yes, and, and let us know a little bit, that's great.
Any other items?
Okay, I'm sorry, so was there a finding or was there a?
There, there's no action, there's no action.
No action, just discussion.
Thank you very much for the details.
Of course.
So moving to item number six, we have consideration of possible action by the planning and zoning commission on the final plat for Briarly, formerly known as Red Bird Meadows, sections four, five, and six.
Thank you, so this, uh, item may seem very familiar because we leave back in October. Um, y'all reviewed the preliminary plans for the, uh, development, four, five, and six. On the attachments that I handed out to you, you will see, uh, very colorful exhibit, kind of outlining the sections and then, uh, actual aerial exhibit of where these individual sections are. So this is Briarly phase one B, which encompasses section four, five, and six of the development, all on the eastern portion of the, uh, property boundary along Walnut Cemetery Row. This is providing total lot count. I did have it. I'll confirm the total lot count of these four individual tracks, but this subdivision has, um, a few approved variances, uh, at the current moment. Total, uh, reduced lot width of sixty feet from your typical seventy-five feet, uh, reduced lot area of eighty-four hundred square feet from your typical nine thousand square feet and then side yard setbacks from your typical ten feet to five feet. As a part of their development agreement, they're also required to provide at least twenty percent of their, uh, sh, shared side lots of a minimum of fifteen feet. So at the end of the development, when all said and done, out of the total six hundred and eighty-two homes approximately, fifteen percent of those have to have side yard setback of fifteen feet min, minimum between houses. They're currently between the total six lots or six sections that they have platted. Section one through three are already platted and then for consideration tonight's four, five, and six, have a total of fourteen percent of your twenty percent with the remaining sections being your larger lots. So making that side yard setback will not be too hard on the developer. This, uh, project would be subject to impact fees, um, sorry, I don't have that number for you either. It's in the realm of the four hundred thousand, uh, for four, five, and six, based on our new city impact fees. I can confirm that number with y'all, um, following this meeting, just so y'all have it. But next steps, um, after, uh, action is taken tonight, we will be taking this to city council. They'll, they'll have the same information that y'all have and then after that, um, or I guess, with that, developer will be required to pay all fees associated with this final plat. Final plat submission fee, impact fee deposit being made before we make any recordation with the county for these final plats.
Did anything signi- significantly change at our last meeting? Meeting, they were, uh, I guess there was a detention pond in the green area, they were extending or getting-
Preliminary plats for-
Yes. Did it affect anything?
No.
Okay.
So that's all within section two, so if you look on that colorful exhibit,
Yes.
You'll see the rec center and that detention pond just to the left of it.
Yes.
That was, and some of the roadway that's abutting the rec center, that was what was being considered by planning and zoning previously.
Okay.
And we're still working through the final plat for that, so y'all haven't seen that one yet.
Um, did they ever, um, put those mobile homes in there yet, or is it, are they still developed?
The construction home or the construction trailers?
Yes.
They have been approved, I think.
Yes, they have, but have they, it's-
One has moved in, I drove out there today.
As today, I, I thought, seen. So how soon will the rest go? Like, what are we talking? Are we just as, as it develops or?
They should be doing fairly quick is my guess, I'll get, I can get a exact schedule from builders and, and see.
Sewer and water and everything is approved and we-
Yes, so sewer and water for sections one through three.
Which includes that area, okay.
Sections four through seven, or four through six, excuse me, uh, construction is ongoing, nearing completion, actually. Uh, we hope to inspect or file inspection issued at Pudgeless prior to New Year's, maybe even Christmas, depending upon a contractor and availability, but yes, that is ongoing. All the construction trailers would have service, there's temporary water out there if they don't have the full.
Prior to the new year, you say?
Potentially.
Okay, potentially, okay. Sorry to get off the-
Oh, you're fine.
Plat, uh, we wanna make sure we're all, it's going so fast, we wanna make sure we're putting it all together.
I know we've talked about it pa, in the past, can you remind me when the turn lane kicks in?
For Old Plantersville?
Yep.
So we actually had a meeting with the county and L J Johnson Development on the twenty-fifth of November, um, essentially outlining the terms of the M O U. There is a agenda item being placed on council for the night to discuss those terms, but it kicks in around this time, phase two of the development, which is the rec center, section seven, and section eight. So it's all, there's a lot of moving pieces with this development, but everything is kicking in the right order.
It's just a lot. I also noticed that we put a sign at the, um, end of, uh, Old Plantersville Road down by here, City Hall, no commercial vehicles. And, um, I just wanted to clarify, cause they're still building. I still see, uh, coming in front on that small road, Old Plantersville Road, right here.
Past the railroad.
No, right here.
Right, and leading up to, yes.
Leading up to the subdivision, I'm still seeing the, uh, vans with the construction workers in them pulling the trailer, not so much the eighteen-wheeler anymore, but we're still having a lot of traffic of the construction personnel, so are we, when you say commercial, you're talking about like eighteen-wheelers?
That is, and, I was gonna say, yeah, that is our-
We can't really stop the big huge trailers and the, that stuff coming down that road right now, right?
No, for tracking damage, I think that would be something that we could easily capture and say, hey, avoid this road, go up towards Old Dominance and then hit one-on-one, um, but again-
Lot of traffic, lot of traffic and, uh, you know, it's twenty miles an hour down this road and I know sometimes they're in a hurry and it's dark and we have the, the cross, cross-country ki, kids running and then we have the little R O T C kids running. Um, I'm just, I know that we're talking about these plants, but we're, we're talking about Briarly, so we might as well just bring up whatever it is that's going on with that subdivision. Um, I just kind of wanna revisit that to make sure that what they're talking about, the C and V, we're talking also about when they have those big one-ton, huge vans with trailers all pulling down there, it's, it's a, still a small road, so I just wanna touch base on that.
We can provide that input to our, uh, construction team and have them try and direct the construction, onsite construction, uh, guys to not take this road.
Okay. Do we have any more questions? I know that we, um, approved item number six, consideration of possible action by us, the planning and zoning commission, um, for the final plats for Briarly, formerly known as Red Bird Meadows, sections four, five, and six.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All these, if you, if you agree, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, if you're against, say nay, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Item number seven? Consideration of, yeah, this has been struck.
Yes, so there, uh, just to provide everyone updates, I know everyone was in the room, I said it. This one, the pla, plats were not ready for council or P N Z approval, so we're pushing it out to next month. Developers are aware and we're working through all comments. So yeah, there's nothing to consider on item number seven.
Moving to item number eight? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt.
Consideration of possible action on the, on a proposal to install a new wall sign at four oh one College Street on the second floor for suite two twenty. I believe we had somebody who wanted to speak? Would you like to?
Just to answer a question?
Okay, perfect.
Good evening, commission members.
How are you?
Morning.
I mean, I need saying morning.
Good morning, you can say.
Whatever day it is, yes ma'am, sorry about that.
So what we're talking about here is four oh one College Street. It is the two-story building that is on the corner of College and the town. Um, the business owner is here, so if you have any questions on that, uh, proposed business sign. It is a wall sign, it'll be on the second floor of that two-story brick building. Um, you have the dimensions on there with those dimensions, it does meet the requirements of not being more than sixty percent of the wall area, um, for that, for that building. It doesn't project over the roof line and it is at the location where the goods and or services are, uh, being offered. Other than the correction that it will not be backlit, actually there won't be a light on there. It will just be, um, attached to the wall of the building and the property owner is aware and has approved attaching this, this wall sign onto that building. And the picture that you see in your packet is about as close as they were able to get it to be scaled onto the sidewall. And if you have any questions here for the business owner, again, he is here to answer any of those questions.
Is the main access to your, the, your rental space up on that second floor?
It's behind the whole front, except the last office is not mine, but the, the majority of it is. Any more questions? Any more questions?
I mean-
I think it looks good.
Yeah.
I, I know we approve the consideration and possible action on a proposed proposal to install a new wall sign at four oh one College Street on the second floor for suite two twenty.
A second?
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of you against, say nay, the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, consideration of possible action on a proposal to construct a new ten-foot by twenty-foot accessory structure in the rear yard of the property located at seven oh six Caroline Street.
Again, this property is at seven oh six Caroline Street. You all had reviewed a similar proposal on the rear side of seven oh six Caroline Street. It was a much bigger accessory structure. Um, he's reduced the size of this accessory structure. He has also proposed that it will be made out of wood on the exterior. Um, the roof will still be metal. You'll see a picture of an example of an existing accessory structure that can be seen off of, um, what street is that, the side street there, uh, between Caroline and College, Eugenia. And that has an existing metal, uh, roof on that structure. Now, if you look from the front side of, uh, seven oh six Caroline, you probably won't be able to see this ten-by-twenty structure because it'll be twenty feet from the side property line. And if you go off to the side street, which is Eugenia, you would have to look over the corner lot and then into the rear yard of this, um, this property. And you'll probably see a little bit of the structure. But he does state that he, the colors on that structure is going to be similar to the existing, um, principal structure.
Uh, what do you back up to?
Another single family, another single family home, there is a six-foot high, um-
It is six foot?
Yes, there is a six-foot high wood fence behind that.
Your fence is it?
Between the structure.
Is it your fence or your back neighbors?
Not sure, they've been there forever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have you, um, have you spoke to your neighbors or anything? Have any, have they said anything?
No, they have, they have several outbuildings on their property, so and I figured it'd be a problem with them because-
Just wondering if they can see it from their backyard. I know that, the reason I ask is we have previously had some people come in and discussed the building and the building kind of over, not overlapped, but the roof came down at a point where the drainage was coming and they could see it and it became unsightly and they wanted to add two more feet to their fence and all that. So you came to us and I'm gonna discuss to you with what other people have brought to us, you know? And when I bring up your neighbors?
Yeah, Mike next door has no problem, he came, he came to the meeting.
Okay.
Um, the neighbors behind us are, they're elderly, so I don't think they're close. Mike said that fence is tall. And the building is gonna be ten-foot easement off of the, uh, north side of the fence.
Seen that, and twenty-foot off the-
West side.
West side, over by Eugenia, and so when you look over. Is the building gonna have electricity or water?
No, strictly storage.
So no lights on the exterior, comfort?
Yes.
No, no lighting? No lighting?
No.
Okay.
No lighting, no lighting.
There were two different, uh, kind of examples, do you know which, one would look, just looked taller than the other? Do you know the approximate height you're looking to utilize?
They're both about the same heat height. I, I think one is, is more like a barn shape.
So those are samples, right? The last two pages of our packet, is that what you're saying? That's not where it's going.
Yeah, that's where it's going.
Right here by this building?
On the far side, that's kind of looking for Eugenia.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, but the, yes, the last page. Looks to be an example of nearby.
Is it, is, are we talking historical?
Uh, go on, those are the examples.
No, I'm talking about historical property near it. Is there any historical property near it?
Next door, mine.
As in a historical landmark type property?
Behind it, correct?
At the corner of, um, Eugenia and-
Caroline.
Caroline, no, College, College, corner of Eugenia and College.
Oh, is it?
Is a historical landmark.
Yes.
Mike's next door can use historical.
Yes, Mike's is historical, we just gave him his plat.
He gave, he gave the meeting the lifetime, so it's serious, that's no problem.
Is there an existing structure there now?
No, there's a small shed, but we're gonna build that.
It'll come down?
Yeah, it'll do.
And you'll replace it with another one?
Yeah. Actually, it's just a metal shed, you know, like it may be hiding metal.
And it's coming down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, um, you'll be monitoring?
Julie?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, because it is ten by twenty, it's two hundred square feet, it will require a building permit, so.
It's fairly big for storage.
Not, not too big for a general accessory structure compared to what he was proposing before.
Yeah, I mean, look, it's thirty to forty-five.
I wish I could vision that house. My mind is blank. My mind is blank. Let's see if I.
I move that uh safely approve consideration of possible action on a proposal to construct a new ten by twenty accessory structure in the rear yard of the property located at seven oh six Caroline Street.
Okay, a second, all second, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay.
Nay.
Two to one, the motion passes. This moves us into commission inquiry. Any items? Item number ten, items to consider for placement on future agenda. Any items? Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion that be adjourned?
So a second, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay, motion passes, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
At six thirty-five.
Is uh, was Bill okay doing that?